For an invocation by Reverend David Stewart from First United Methodist Church.
Thank you, Mayor. Let us pray. Gracious and loving God, we are so thankful that we can gather here on this day after Easter. Easter where we have celebrated your amazing love and the power of your resurrection. We pray for that same spirit of resurrection and hope to be in our meeting this evening. Send your spirit upon us that we might have new eyes to see possibilities, to have dreams and visions of what could happen in our community. Give us your spirit of cooperation to be able to work together to accomplish those goals and those visions and those dreams that will make this a place where people feel safe, where people have opportunities, where people want to raise their families and grow old. Lord, we pray also for a heart and a compassion that we would see people with your eyes and your heart, that all may be included in this dream. For this we pray in your precious name, amen.
Roll call.
Councilman DeGerris.
Here.
Councilwoman Abshir.
Here.
Councilman Tinsley.
Here.
Councilman Johnson.
Here.
Mayor Protem Russian.
Here.
Mayor Pierce.
Here.
Disclosure of interest, any member of the city council may disclose any possible conflict of interest dealing with either any item on the printed agenda or with any matter discussed at a previous meeting. Seeing none, citizens input, each person in the audience may take this opportunity to address the city council on any matter which is not on the printed agenda. If you come forward, please state your name and address for the record.
I was here in 2013. And I have pictures of a ditch on 20... I'm Ruby Goodrum, by the way. Twenty-six, twenty-two North Fourteenth Street. I want to pass these around since we have your faces. At this time, I argued about the rush of the water in this ditch. And we were almost two years getting that fixed where it slowed the water down so it wouldn't wash away. It was eroding my property to the effect that my foundation and my home was in danger. And we have just recently, of course, the harsh winter we had and the two inches of snow of ice and then the snow on top of that, then another snow followed, and then after that, there was two days of rain. So it's in real bad shape now. And we are engaged in getting a retaining wall, concrete retaining wall, around our property. Another thing I want to bring up is, at the end of my property, there's something in there that belongs to the city, and I've been told it, and it's a...
Manhole, sewer manhole.
Yeah, manhole. Mr. David Johnson and Mr. Avery came out and looked at the ditch, and they fixed that, slowed that water, they fixed it. But now, it's got to be fixed. So we went ahead and engaged an outfit that will fix us a retaining wall on that ditch. But then we've got another problem. At the end of my property where that thing is, for the cities, that Dr. Varma, that owns five homes there on Linda Street.
Oh, thank you.
All of my water, all of my land and the rock that was there when I moved there in 2003 has washed away. And it's dammed up down there on Linda Street. And it's backing up where this manhole base thing. And I wouldn't want to swim in it because it attracts the poison snakes. And I would like to know why we can't get that doctor, either to hire somebody or the city do something and get all of that rock that's dammed up down there on Linda Street? Because there's a big hole right there that retains it, backs up on us, and it's... Let me hold. I talked to him about it, and he said he would... He said he would get in touch with people to see if they could get that hole.
And that's the process we're doing right now. Yes, Dennis had written a letter to Dr. Varma about it, saying that he needs to take care of his ditch there. The ditch is stopped up about halfway between your property and Linda Street. It's in the ditch. But it's on private property, and we can't, the city can't go in there and clear it out. But we are in, Dennis is in the process, and him and I were talking about it, trying to get Varma, you know, it's his responsibility to go in there and clean it up. Part of the problem is, people around there, someone has throwed limbs and things in there, and that's kind of made like what I'd say, a beaver dam in there. You know, they've all combined together with the rock.
Whose responsibility is it?
Well, it's on Dr. Varma's property, and I believe Dennis Knight would say that it's his responsibility. And...
Because that water is supposed to flow through. Reddron put in that property after I moved there.
Correct.
And I knew it was going to be...
And it's supposed to flow down there, but it's not because of the stoppage. And...
There's a dam down there.
Yeah, and I don't want to say our hands are tied, but our hands are tied a little bit because we can't go in private property and clean it. You know, I guess if we could get permission...
Isn't there some ordinances that you have?
There probably is, and I don't know exactly what ordinance it is. Dennis, would you come up here, please? Do you know of any ordinance about that? Do you know of any ordinance that she might...
That would allow us to get on Mr. Varma's property?
Right, or clean it up.
If we wanted to take legal process against him and put him in violation of a section of the ordinance, I think we do have the right, once we go through the proper process, to go on his property, do the work, and charge the cost back to him. But that's what we would have to go through.
Right, but right now, we're in the process of letting him know that he needs to get it cleaned up.
Right.
And that's anything, it's a slow process to get it done.
I contacted code enforcement last week. It was the day that y'all were doing the tour of City Hall building, I believe. And at that time, we were making contact with Mr. Varma. And I haven't spoken to the code enforcement officer yet this week about it, but I will tomorrow.
But you and I have walked that ditch from all the way...
Several times, yes.
Several times. And there's several places. Below her house and above her house got some of the same problems that probably needs to be addressed. With some stoppage. We were up... Can't think of the name of the street.
Zem Avenue.
Yeah, on Zem Avenue, looking at the other day, and there's a stoppage up there that we're getting permission from the homeowner came out with us, and we're getting permission. We got to draw up a little plan, you said.
I actually have that on paper.
And, you know, so we can...
Same, maybe the same thing here.
Yeah, we can take care of that. And he's going to give us permission if he agrees with a plan that we want to do.
Yes.
So we haven't forgot you. We are in the process of doing this. You know...
It took two years just to get the stoppage done.
But when we came out there earlier in the year, Dennis Knight came out there and looked what the city problem was, what was washing under the culverts. You know, we had that fixed the next day because it was on city right of way. The street department came out and visited with us, and they said, "Oh, fix it." So they fixed it the next day, and that's helped quite a bit from washing things down. So it's a slow process right now, but we are working on it and hoping we can get it done. You know what I'm saying? So we have tried. But I appreciate you coming up here and telling us about it.
But what am I going to do about my house? I know these two, the two guys that we've got hired to build that concrete wall. And it's supposed to start April the 20th.
And that'll help you to build a concrete wall. It should...
It'd be concrete.
Yeah, it should keep that water from going up against your, the side of the ditch, eventually roding up to your house. But we'll be working on trying to get the creek cleaned out down below you.
Carol Davis is with me, and she's having some work done on her till across the ditch for the outside, too.
But I... Dennis, you know of anything else we can do right now?
I would like to see if we can get Mr. Varma to meet with us out there.
Okay.
Obviously, you know, that depends on his schedule.
Right.
And his willingness to meet with us.
Right.
But I think that we can convince him of the need if we can get him out there and move from there. It's just now getting dry enough that you wouldn't want to get back into that area because it's, you know, it carries a lot of water.
It's a rainy month.
It carries a lot of water, and we're not wanting to get out there and tear people's yards up, but we have to get in from Linda's to get there. Linda Lane to get there.
It carries water a long ways from there. And eventually goes on down. Can't believe how far it goes down, what it does.
But I'd say it needs, it needs to be done reasonably soon, you know, to correct the problem before we get, you know... And much more damage to her.
Right.
You say they're going to be working on that later this month, Ms. Goodrum?
Yeah, April 20th.
All right.
Starts.
All right.
And they're going to be digging the footing with rebar first. And then they'll come back and build on that, which will be approximately five feet tall.
That'll definitely help your problem there.
Yeah.
Take care of the majority of the dirt portion of the house.
Solid concrete reinforcement rebar.
Right, right. But Dennis and I will work on trying to get Dr. Varma out there to see what we can do.
Thank you.
Good luck.
I'm Ruth Scoggins from 1410 Rosedale. I'm eighty-two years old, and seventy-six of these years have been living in Papa Bluff. Retired from sixty-two years of banking, and fifty-eight of those years were here in Papa Bluff. Because of these years, I am known by many, and I know many of our citizens who are taxpayers. First, I want to say to you who serve on our city council, I know that the dollar you get per year does not pay you for all of the time, the thoughts, the concern, and the responsibilities you have for this city. During the past few weeks, I have been able to talk with each of you, and I appreciate your sharing of your time with me. I confess that I don't know very much about city government, but I do wish to share a few of the thoughts and concerns that I have for Papa Bluff. We are not a big city. We started out as a small town, but we're growing very rapidly. We have many well-educated and capable citizens. We have hard-working people and people who are experienced in carrying on the business of our city. Not all of this has been learned from a book, but from life situations. As I understand our governing system for running our city, it's that the citizens elect you council people to represent them. You are then to select, hire, and oversee the city manager. They are, you are responsible in making decisions and seeing that policies are followed. I encourage the council to not make hasty decisions. Study the proposals that are given to you. Know what you are voting for. Ask questions, have the facts. I'm sure that previous councils and city managers have not always made the right decisions. But now we are talking about the present. Remember that it is first the citizens, then the council, and the city manager. To Don Schreiber and to Donna Farley and to the DAR, I would say thank you for raising the attention of our citizens to get more involved in some of the serious wrong decisions that have been made. The city is run by the citizens, not the city manager. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
It's hard to follow Mrs. Ruth, that's for sure. She's loved by many. Steve Holter, 3194 Foxwood. I'm actually here to speak on the agenda, but I have some other things that aren't on the agenda that I'd like to talk about. Really, just one thing, and that is, I met with Mr. Kirby from the street department as well as the plant manager of Mid-Continent Nail today. We took a tour of Butson Drive, which is between, it's on the backside of Briggs and Stratton and the front side of Gates Corporation. Very well-traveled road, small road, it's just a little over a third of a mile. Heath and I have talked about it in the past. That road really, really needs some help. And I'm just here to ask the council and Heath that you guys consider repairs as quickly as possible. And they've tried some things in the past, but if you haven't been out there, there's a lot of trucks that go on that road. And I know there's talk of paving a lot of streets, and I understand the importance of that. But I would say, in my opinion, of course, I'm kind of partial to that road, obviously, that there's probably no more important road out there that needs repaired. It's, I mean, the numbers of truck traffic that go through there are amazing. And with the increased, the expansion of Mid-Continent Nail, it's even more important today than it ever has been. Quite honestly, it's embarrassing when you drive that road right now. So I would just ask for your help on that. It is, it isn't, there isn't a long-distance for a road. We thought that we might be able to incorporate that in the cost of what this project is doing, the overpass or railroad tracks, but that's not going to be possible. We're clawing for every dollar we can for that overpass project. The good news on that project is it looks like we're moving forward on that project. And it looks like, with the help of a lot of different funding mechanisms, including the city, that we'll be able to get that done. And that's something that's very much needed in the industrial park, if you've ever been out that way. And so it seems like every time I go out there, a train comes by. I'm sure it's probably, it'll alert somebody from UP to take a train through there or whatever. Sure enough, I was out there today and another train. But it does pose problems waiting on those trains. There's a safety situation out there. Lost productivity with those truck drivers waiting around and those employees waiting around. But it looks like we're moving forward on that. That's great news. And Felicity Ray from Ozark Foothills Regional Planning Commission's been huge in that and very instrumental in that. So we are moving. That's the good news. But Butson Drive really needs some help. So Mr. Kirby's aware of it. He obviously agrees with it. He's got some good ideas on it. So anything you guys can do on that, I would appreciate it.
What did he say needed to be done?
Well, there's a lot of things that, to do it right, it would cost a lot of money because the base there just is really in disarray. But he's looked at some options as far as overlay. He feels like once we get some pavement on there, that it'd be a lot easier to repair that pavement. You know, I'm not a road guy, you know, I don't claim to be...
Is it gravel now?
Excuse me?
I have to confess, I'm ignorant to the road. Is it gravel now?
No, it's concrete.
It's concrete that's falling apart.
It's like driving over, and if you're in an eighteen-wheeler, it's really, really rough. But it's, you know, the good news is, it is a small, it's just like a little over a third of a mile. So if they were to do an overlay. And once again, there's probably somebody that's going to hear this or watch it and say they know better than I do and maybe even more than Mr. Kirby do as far as what needs to happen to it. But that is the number-one issue in the industrial park right now. And I hear it from the plant managers, I hear it from the employees out there. As you guys can all appreciate, you know, our manufacturing base is the lifeblood of our community. And we've got to, we've got to keep those folks to where they can operate properly. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Hello?
First of all, I'm on a PA system where we can hear what's going on back here. Can't hear any of you, 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 or any of you, except you when I'm sitting here. Second, I'm tired of the feud, like the Hatfield and the HoCoys, between the paper and the city. Most of what is going on in the city now, the councilmen weren't here, the city manager wasn't here. There's a few that were. Anything that you want to, that's happened, you can blame on past people, not the ones that are here now. Papa Bluff is rural outside. I've lived here fifty years this year. You can't imagine the changes that I've seen. When I moved here, I thought I had moved to the Dark Ages. It was like in a time capsule. I said, "The first thing we got to do is change the form of government, get electric wires underground, and get a planning and zoning committee, commission, and so forth, street commissioners." Most of the streets weren't even paved. I was absolutely appalled. I went to high school in a town of two thousand that was more up-to-date, had a better education system than this town ever thought about having. I did grow up in the city, which gave me some advantages, but the advantages I had in this small town in high school were unbelievable. And I hope that we continue on the right plane. I, when I moved here, Papa Bluff had a terrible, terrible reputation. Had not a very nice name. And it has finally gotten past that. We have finally got shops where people can come to Papa Bluff and spend their money instead of going to Cape or Jonesboro or Paducah or St. Louis or Memphis or wherever. Let's don't send them away. We are going to have to raise electric rates. Anybody that has half a brain realizes energy costs have gone up starting in 2008. I know. I have to, I had to make a lot of trips to St. Louis that year. They, they got to go up, and I, for one, don't like it, and a lot of people aren't going to. And they're going to have to give up a DVD a day or plug it in their cellphone for a week or buy a new one or another flat-screen TV because this room doesn't have one. But Papa Bluff can't support a town of seventeen thousand or whatever it is because I think it's been lied about for years because then we didn't have the open or the liquor for the drink that we've got now and people want to keep it under their thumb. I never saw such a bunch of hypocrites when I moved here. I could not believe it. Do as I say, don't do as I do. Go to church on Sunday, but go out and get plastered on Saturday night. That was their motto. I, I hope that the average bear in this town is smarter and had to figure out that all this council isn't responsible or the city manager for what happens. I've been checking into eight points. I have decided that Papa Bluff got conned out of its shoes and it sucks. With that deal, it probably should have never happened. I'm going to get into it more and more, but I think that's the bottom line on it. I want to, I'll be dead probably in the next ten years, but I hope it continues to grow, and I hope we get some more manufacturing, even if it's a two-hundred-personnel company. We need, these part-time jobs we have do not support a family. Our main problem with getting industry here is because we have this attitude by workers who, they're either hired a kite and they can't work, or they're so hungover they can't get out of bed, or, "I don't want to work today, I want to do something else." That is a lot of the attitude. I know I've been in retail business in this town, I've dealt with it. It's unbelievable. You mean I got to work on Sunday? I wanted to go to the lake that day. Well, folks, I've worked seven days a week, sometimes sixteen hours a day. Didn't hurt me a bit, and I was over forty and fifty years old. Let's get some smarts. I, I apologize if I hurt anybody's feelings, I didn't mean to. But I'm tired of the, I don't take the Papa Bluff paper. My neighbor brings me hers, and we laugh about it. They, now, I'm going to be facetious. I have to tell you funny. There was one little thing in Speak Out. I thought, "I'm not going to lure myself to that level," but the more I thought about it, the, I could not believe it. This woman was making a reference to Mr. Kaplan need to go back to Kansas. It struck my funny bone. Now, most of the stuff that's printed in that Speak Out is hearsay, hearsay, that's another thing. The hearsay and the gossip in this town, but timing it starts out over here, it's, "Jesus was born on Christmas," but over here, it's, "Let's go to Six Flags on Saturday." And it's nothing I wanted to put back in the paper in Speak Out. The person who said he came from Kansas was wrong. You've got forty-nine states to choose from, guess again. So...
What was your name?
What?
We got to have your name and your address for the record.
What?
What is your name and address for the record?
Okay, I'm 1736 Whispering Hill, my Yiddish... By the way, I used to live in the house next door, what this lot is. Water ran all over that lot for, I lived there seven years. It was, the only time I would have a gully washer, water just runs everywhere. And then they built those two subdivisions off of barren roads which flooded more water down into this area. So now it's ten times worse. My kids used to play in that ditch. So I know a little about it. In fact, one time, they came home with a five-foot king snake. I made them put it back, but anyway, they... Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Make Papa Bluff proud.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right, if there's no one else, we'll move on to workshop required items. Item A, the city council will review a request from the Planning and Zoning Commission to deny a conditional use permit to sell liquor by the drink at a proposed restaurant in a CX3 Central Area Mixed Use Commercial Zone District. The property is located at 201 South Main Street, and the applicant is Diana Denton Bueller, 201 South Main Street. Mr. Avery?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. As you stated, the applicant is Diana Denton Bueller. Denton and Company is LLC. When she first came to the Planning and Zoning Commission, she requested that conditional use permit to sell liquor by the drink at a proposed restaurant in the CX3 Commercial Mixed Use District at 201 South, or 201 South Main. I don't want to get crossed up because we've got one on Broadway later. 201 South Main, but she owns that building. The zoning in this area down there is CX3 Mixed Use Commercial and has been since 2002, February of 2000, I'm sorry, February of 2012, when we changed the zoning down there. All liquor licenses issued in the downtown district, whether it's CX3 or C3, are by conditional use, and they need to be licensed as a restaurant that sells liquor by the drink, which puts certain requirements upon them, which the city clerk is more familiar with, the ins and outs... with the ins and outs of the liquor laws than I am, but, but that's why she was requesting a conditional use. This actually came before council about a month ago, and it requested that it would go back to planning and zoning for more research, which we did do, we readdressed it, and at that time, there was no change in the recommendation. The planning commission unanimously recommended denial the last time that they addressed it. I spoke against it the last time, or I spoke recommending denial the last time, and I will as well this time. We do have representatives from downtown Poplar Bluff and from the Historic Preservation Commission here tonight, and they are opposed to it, and spoke at it at one of the previous There were some issues that came up as possibly that she might give up one thing for another, but we cannot take away what she offered to give up, because it's a non-conforming use, and we can't take away a use that is allowable from her. So that was not, once it went back to planning and zoning, that was not a point of discussion for them, because it was not within their power to act in that manner. And I believe you were at the meeting, mayor, that night, that we were talking about that. This property is in the Harbor Downtown Commercial District. Nothing substantially changed from the previous time that we addressed it. And again, the applicant stated she would give up the conforming use of adult novelty sales to have the conditional use permit for alcohol sales. We sought legal counsel on that, and we determined that we could not take that away. So that was not a point of discussion, much discussion, of planning and zoning. It's the responsibility of the Planning and Zoning Commission to find that the establishment, maintenance, or operation of the conditional use will not be detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety, morals, comfort, or general, general welfare of the area, and find that the conditional use would not impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of surrounding property for uses permitted in the district. Again, staff recommends denial. We did have one property owner, adjoining property owner, come to one of our last meetings and was not particularly in favor of it. I won't use his name. I believe some of you were at that meeting and saw that, that gentleman. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them at this time. And Ms. Denton Bueller is here tonight as well.
Any other comments or questions on the issue? Not, do we have a motion and a second to move it to the voting session, April 20th?
Make a motion to move it to the voting session, April 20th.
Motion and second to move item A to the voting session, which will be held on April 20th. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Item B, the city council will review a letter of engagement between the city of Poplar Bluff and Carmundi McDonald, PC. Mr. Kaplan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This item is referred to the Shelby Road Extension Project. This is a current TDD project. In the, uh, the project area, we have to secure and all the right-of-way necessary to build the road to extend Shelby Road beyond where it's, where the intersection is at, um, near the Harps and in Moritz Way South until it connects near 53. There are three property owners right now that have retained council, and the council, you know, specialty with which they handle legal matters is eminent domain, even though the city has not taken a position either way in regards to the use or applicability of eminent domain. So in this case, instead of putting a staff or consultants in the, in the line of fire with an opposing attorney, I think it's best to bring in, um, a, an attorney that represents the city. The reason why the city's recommending this, not the TDD, is the TDD cannot, uh, they can, they don't have the power of eminent domain, only the city does. And so, in this case, I'm not advocating for the immediate implication, or application, I mean, of eminent domain here. I just want an attorney that can talk directly with the opposing council and hopefully come to a settlement that's agreeable. Then if it's not agreeable, then we have it within our, our power to accelerate that process through an eminent domain proceeding. And I, I use the word, term accelerate, but there's nothing quick about eminent domain process. And so, what I'm asking for tonight is to be able to approve the engagement of the attorney that specified in the, in the motion, and be able to represent the city and, you know, like I said, negotiating with the, the opposing council. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Hold on a second.
Please.
I'd make a motion and move it to the voting sessions tonight.
Before we do that, just, are there any other comments or questions or anything? Okay. Motion?
Second.
Motion and second to move item B to be held, uh, to the voting session that will be held tonight. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Item C, the city council will review an agreement between the city of Poplar Bluff and First Southwest Company LLC for the city to use as financial advisors.
Okay.
Mr. Kaplan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In this regard, assuming that the debt policy is approved tonight, I'd like to move very aggressively forward towards the debt issuance and the reimbursement of Eight Points Development in regards to the amount that we owe them for the two certificates of substantial completion that's, which has been approved by the city. And so, in that case, obviously, First Southwest has been very instrumental in getting the city in the position we're in today, and I'd like to be able to continue to use their services as we progress through the transaction. They have really put in a lot of, a lot of time into this. Yes, where they compensate, yes, they were. But in this case, since this is not an easy transaction, you need consultants and experts in this area to be able to guide the city into making the best financial decision for the citizens. So with that, Madam Mayor, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Is there, did we bid this out?
I did not.
And I think I noticed in there was a five-year contract?
You can make it a year, yeah, it's just, it's just a proposal.
Yeah. I thought, you know, we learned with Mr. Bagby's contract, that we were kind of restricted to one-year contracts.
For city managers, that's correct, but for consultants, you're not.
I think it would be wise to bid it out, but, you know, as you were saying, First Southwest, we, we've already used them and everything, but just continuing along with what we're trying to do, we've been bidding, bidding out everything, haven't we? I mean...
We have, and again, I'm just trying to get the process moving as quickly as possible.
That's understandable.
If we, if we bid it out, you're adding probably anywhere between four and six weeks on to, uh, right now, if we were moving everything forward today, you're looking at a potential debt issuance anywhere between mid-May and mid-June. This will push it well into either July or August, because I wouldn't recommend moving forward a debt issuance without proper consult, consultation.
I'd make the motion that we table this item until we receive bids. We may have somebody that'd save us quite a bit of money if we bid it out.
Second.
Motion and second to table item...
C.
Item C until bids are received?
Do we have, I have a question. Do we have any idea how much cost we're looking at right now for the services we're, we're talking about engaging?
Uh, yeah, they got, it's based on percentage. Let me bring it up. Let's see here. Bear with me, I'm just gonna bring up their contract here. Now here's right one. So their base fee on any issue, $20,000 plus $10 per thousand thereafter.
How quickly do you think that you could, could get bids?
Well, it depends on what we bid for. The reason why it's a, it's not an apples-for-apples comparison, there are some firms that, that will tell you that they're a financial advisor, but they don't have the full gamut of services, in my opinion, to qualify as a financial advisor, but it's not my, it's not, you know, for Heath Kaplan to say if you are or not a financial advisor. If we bid it out with certain criteria that I'd like, there's, there's only three firms that I know of in the whole country that can do the financial advising that I want. If you make it more generic, to include some of the firms in Missouri that don't have the full services available, then you're, you're talking several more that would be eligible. But there is just a very distinct difference between someone that says they're a financial advisor, which may be true, but if they don't have the full gamut of services behind that firm, the data's really not that good.
First, correct me if I'm wrong, but First Southwest has all the primary information on it. They're familiar with it. For anybody else to pick it up, they would have to start from square one.
Well, I, and you would have to start from square one. I think there would be some trade-off that we can help get the new vendor up to speed on. First Southwest is the largest financial advisory firm for governments in the nation. There's not one bigger. No, it's not this bigger make, make it better. Well, I guess that, leave that in the eye of the beholder. But, no, I, we can do the best we can to get them up to speed. You know, I think, you know, the developers is gonna have to understand, if we go with a new financial advisor, we gotta get that new financial advisor up to speed, because you just don't wanna jump into a $13 million bond.
Well, and, and with, with regards to the bonds we're looking at to satisfy our obligation, can you, can we not set a boundary or a bar of, they have to have X amount of abilities or resources?
Well, you can, that's...
I think that's what we'd have to do.
Well, that's what I'm saying is, but if I do that, it's gonna pretty much exclude probably all the firms in the state of Missouri, if you do that.
I believe in the past, when, when bids were, I could be wrong on this now, that you could, you could contact perhaps the list of people that you, that have the qualifications that you're looking for. Maybe those top three, and invite them to bid. Am I wrong on that?
No, that's what I would do. I mean, I, we'd post it, and then I'd reach out to the firms that I knew that would qualify and see if I can get them to bid. No, it's just, but it takes a process. Once we get them in, we're gonna wanna interview them, we're gonna wanna make sure we do it the way that we, we were set up a structure and a committee structure to how we evaluate these proposals. I wouldn't wanna rush it through, 'cause I, there's a lot to educate them on, because this, uh, this redevelopment agreement with Eight Points took me seven months to go through.
Well, and the unique thing that's different, unlike the Coliseum bonds, is we had a sales tax, and we antiquated that that would be adequate enough to pay it. And right now, with the revenues coming in from Eight Points, we don't know if it's antiquated enough to take care of our responsibility.
Oh, well, I know for a fact it's not.
Well, not now, I know it's not.
Right, right. I mean, right now, you got...
Well, it's the two big differences. One, we had, we knew we had revenues. The other, we don't know we have revenues, and that makes it a little bit different creature.
Right. Well, we're on the fence on this one as a city, is you got on the ground, you've got approximately almost $25 million worth of taxable sales tax capture right now on the ground as we speak. How much can that support right now? $3 million worth of debt. But right now, we're obligated to reimburse $13 million plus. So what's gonna cover the additional 10? That's the $10 million question, and so that what the developer is gonna say, and is, hey, look, we're projecting that we'll get enough development out there to make up the $10 million difference. Well, just to give you an idea of what that'll be, it's 91% above what they're projecting from 14, that's supposed to be happening in 15. So does anyone in this, on this council feel that we're gonna get 91% more development in Eight Points this year before the end of this year?
I mean, it doesn't look like it's possible at all.
So I'm curious of how we're gonna pay for that.
Yeah, well, and coming back to the issue of, you know, I'm not opposed to bidding it, and I'm not opposed, I just wanna make sure that whoever, if they come up with a lower bid, I wanna make sure their expertise is enough to handle our situation.
I agree with that, too, and if, and if he's saying that there's about three of them that have all of the, the full gamut of what we need, then my recommendation would be for him to reach out to, to everyone who has all those qualifications and see if they'll bid on it. And if we do save, you know, if we do save money in that process, then it might be worth tabling to bid it out, just...
What's the time gonna pass?
Just to make sure we did the due diligence.
Four, 46 weeks.
Mr. Kaplan, on the appendix, compensation for services, where it says $25,000 payable, and then a fee of 2% of the par of any bond, does that mean, like I said, on that 13, if that's $13 million worth of bond, do they get 2% of that?
Well, I'm just going to the top of the appendix where it says the fees due to First Southwest will not exceed those contained in the fee schedule listed, and it says base fee of 20,000 and plus the $10 per thousand thereafter.
This is compensation for services rendered, and it's, I think, the last page on that document.
No, I see what you're talking about. You're talking about not, it's a non-refundable upfront cash payment of 25,000.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, it's a retainer.
And then a fee of 2%?
Yep, 2, the fee of 2% on any par of any bonds or debt issued by the city, or by any other entity under the city controls for the benefit of development. Um, let's see here.
So if there's 13...
Tax, notice anything else. Uh, notwithstanding any provisions agreement, please say that the city's obligation with respect to the fee of 2% of the, of the par or any bond that issued by the city, um, shall terminate if no such bond or debt issuance is, is issued. So yes, answer your question. That, that would be added into their fee schedule.
So 13,000 would be what, $260,000? If it's a $13 million bond?
On the $13 million bond, I haven't calculated, but I can get it for you.
I think, um, five years, we might want to decrease that time to maybe a year to two years, and just so that we're...
What I'd recommend, Madam Mayor, if you don't mind me, you know, advising you, is do a five-year engagement, but make it one-year renewable terms.
Okay.
That's what I would do. Just that way you can, you guys can get out if you don't like it in year one. That's what I would do.
I think that's a good suggestion.
And has the finance committee, have they looked at this and said anything?
I haven't gotten, the finance committee will have their first meeting on the 15th, and so first I gotta get them up to speed. I don't wanna throw too much at them at once. I'm gonna, I'm gonna give them a orientation of the city's finances, and I got a lot of data I'm preparing for them with that. I have also prepared a, a financial statement for them, and then I'm gonna have them guide me as to what information they wanna see from that point forward. To me, it would just be, I think, handicap them if I threw something like this at them without them even knowing any base knowledge as to how the city's finances are at this current state. So, but eventually, I'd like to get them involved, but I just don't wanna prematurely get them involved either, so...
Okay, no further questions? I have a motion and a second to table item C until we have some bids. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Item C is due. Item D, the city council will review a proposal for a new website for the city of Poplar Bluff.
Madam Mayor, item D was competitively bid, and we did receive four proposals. In your package, you'll see the rationale behind how we interviewed and select the finalists, which we're presenting today for approval. This would be a complete overhaul of the existing website. Right now, the website is not very useful, in my opinion, for the public to gain a lot of knowledge on how the city works, and, and, and so we wanna provide more of a, an interactive website that's more of a virtual employee, that in case, you know, so if anyone has any sunshine requests, really they can get the information from the website, so they get it immediately, don't have to pay anything, the data's there. And so that's what I'm looking for, is I don't want people to feel that City Hall is a barrier for them to get information, and I feel this... a barrier for them to get information, and I feel this new website will get them the information without them having to pay a nickel for it. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
For the knowledge of the public, could you just kind of go down a rundown of what we're looking for on the website? When you say sunshine requests, that means pretty much all of the minutes, which is already on there, the videos?
Videos, also our social media.
Okay.
Because we do have a Twitter account, we do have a Facebook account, those live feeds would be on the site. If someone had a request for a building permit application, that process would be now on the website. Our application process for, let's say, anyone who wants to gain employment, this would be automated up through the website, where they can apply onsite, we can track their progress through the website, and let's say also, if someone wanted to report a pothole, or they have a request for service, like the young lady that was here tonight had a concern regarding the drainage, she would be able to go on this website and be able to put in a service request form. And that would immediately funnel its way through its workflow programming to the proper department, also with a tickler on it, timing in it from the time we received it to the time we fixed it, how long it took us to respond. I'm just giving you just a little snippet of, and then also, when you get the police reports, when people want to order a police report, instead of them having to come down to City Hall and order a police report, they can do it online. You want to pay your utility bill, you can be able to pay that online.
Will the websites then be combined, so municipal utilities won't have their own websites, they'll be...
Well, it'll be all on one master page. I mean, you'll click on utilities, and it'll look like it's going to a different page, but it'll be all one master architecture.
Okay.
And so the ones that'll have the different look and feel to it will be utilities, police, fire, parks. That's it. The rest of them, we figured would have pretty much the same look and feel.
Good.
Of course, we can always adjust that.
Any comments, questions?
Yeah, I'm sure it would work a lot better, and probably save some time on some of the office girls. My only concern is that, you know, it's like, what, a little over $60,000 for it and the maintenance?
Well, the $46,000 is for them to develop, and the yearly maintenance is like 15 and some change. And that includes our licensing for some of the products and modules that we're looking to, one of them being, the most expensive one is the HR module. Right now, the reason why I like that HR module so much, Mark and I, is we don't have a module, we don't even have a process, really, of doing employee evaluations. We do within certain departments, like I see the police department does it, I see the fire department does it, City Hall doesn't do it. I don't know when the last time anyone in City Hall's had a performance evaluation. We've got to have performance evaluations. And so this HR module does more than just applicant tracking, it does the whole gamut of human resources. It even has a portal in there for employees to be able to log in, you know, a complaint, or if they have any EOC issue, you name it. So, but the large part of that $14,690 is simply just the HR piece, as long as the licensing piece.
I'm sure, you know, it'd be good, and, you know, updating is always good, and would save, but that amount of money with us looking now, you know, having to move the police department, and, you know, do the conditions and everything over there, if we couldn't use some of that money and just hold off on this if at all possible, or implement it in small portions.
The amount of money that this would cost, one, it was already factored into the budget for the October loan, which we have through Southern Bank, and so we got it covered on the capital side. On the maintenance side, we just have to factor that into the budget for next year, which it's not going to, I don't think I'm going to have a problem squeezing in almost $15,000 in the maintenance into the budget.
So all this is in, except...
Yeah, maintenance on...
Later on.
Yeah, exactly right. Our reoccurring cost is $15,000 per year, from this point thereafter.
Do you think that maintenance may go down after they get all the bugs worked out, or whatever it is?
If anything, it goes up. Yeah, I mean, unfortunately, Civics Plus is probably one of the largest municipal website developers out there, and they've done a lot of the cities around us. And so if anything, the costs will probably go up. I hate to say, I mean, I just know nothing goes down nowadays. But, no, I, to be real truthful, I think this will be, will be until the expiration of the agreement, and then, if anything, it might go up because of inflation.
Yeah. Well, I don't know if mine, when I finally got it open, I think it was Saturday before I could ever get mine to open, that none of that other stuff you were talking about, the other bids, or how the determination was made, was on my notebook.
You don't have it?
No, all I had was this Civic Plus.
Yeah, I mean, it's part of the packet. Let me go past the Civic Plus agreement. Just give me a minute, I've got a lot of larky in here. Yeah, mine, Madam Clerk, does not have it either.
This is the only one I was provided.
Because I, no, I emailed you the rationale from Renisha. Renisha and Michael Pryor were the ones that had the information as to afford that to you, but that's all right. I mean, I apologize, I thought it was in the packet. I can read it to you if you want.
Yeah, what was the differences, yeah?
Sure. Give me a quick minute. Okay, so, let me read this to you. Civics Plus has the most comprehensive bid package, I'm sorry, so everyone can hear me. Has the most comprehensive bid package and reasonable pricing for services deployed by the company compared to its other competitors. The company provided the website committee with in-depth information regarding modules, functionalities, and processes. The sites showcased were visibly appealing, balanced, and easy to navigate. Civic Plus has five essentials to build a trustworthy website, which includes vision, alignment, usability, mobility, and measurement. These five essentials will ensure the city's effectiveness in communicating and engaging with our community through the website. Civic Plus allows the city to engage in the creative process with web designers to develop our very own robust website, setting us apart from other cities. The website will be refreshed every four years, which will assist us in the progression of our city, which also lends to the reoccurring fee. The city requested Civic Plus to be able to produce certain functionalities that would assist the various departments with daily operations, such as online payments, as we talked about, citizens' ability to report items that meet the immediate attention, accessible forms for citizens to populate on for a sunshine request, be able to get that information, citizen request tracker for any request they have, human resource module, like we talked about, and the integration at social media, like we talked about. The city of Papa Bluff residents are very social media and smartphone savvy. The residents have been proven to utilize social media to voice opinions and concerns with the community. Civic Plus has reassured the web committee that the site will be compatible with all mobile browsers and backward compatible, compatible with at least two releases of Internet Explorer, Firefox, Safari, or Chrome. In addition to our website being mobile-friendly, Civic Plus can also offer mobile applications to service departments' needs, such as the police department. Civics Plus offers 24/7 support with a two-hour response time and provides onsite training for three days, as well as train-to-trainer, which is much better than competitors. Government content management system is utilized by Civics Plus to provide the city with the most innovative, user-friendly, and comprehensive source for engaging e-government websites. The company's profile includes 100, 18, I'm sorry, 1,800 governmental clients and counting. Based on price, design, functionality, and various other components in Civics Plus presentation, the website committee unanimously chose Civic Plus to develop a website for our community. The companies that weren't selected, Vision Internet, the reason why they weren't selected was inability to provide great customer service based on references. They're a California company, when we checked their references, which they had a lot in the state of Missouri, a lot of their clients in Missouri didn't even recommend them. So we're like, okay, well, that makes that one pretty simple. Yodel, they're out of Kansas City. The inability to develop creative designs for websites and customer support costs that increase after 45 days with additional monthly payments. Pool Communications here locally, their price exceeded the quality of the product, which their price was almost double, as the price you're considering tonight. And that's everything I have, and I apologize, you didn't get that in the packet.
With Yodel, what was their price line?
They were a little bid, and I'm trying, I don't have it in front of me, but they were like $23,000. And again, that was just the baseline, that included any of the add-ons. Like, for example, in Civics Plus, their base was like $25,000. But once you added in all the things we needed and wanted, that's where we got up to the $46,000 that we're at now. So that's a not-to-exceed price.
So who made up the committee?
It was myself, the clerk's office, Mr. Massingham, we had the police department that was represented, we had the parks department, utilities. Am I missing anyone, Madam Clerk? I think that's everything.
So I guess, I guess if we're talking about...
Oh, grants department, sorry.
I guess if we're talking about concern of cost, you know, the only way you would really manage that is to draw things off of there you don't want to have. And that would have to be, you'd have to deal with the individual departments or whatever that wanted to have this better.
Yeah, the process we followed was, once we interviewed and selected Civics Plus, we brought them right back in, just to meet with the department heads, to be able to show them what the product is, and to be able to refine the proposal, because I hate having a range of costs for any proposal. I like to have something that's a not-to-exceed number. And so we brought them back in, we talked to the department heads, and once we determined what people wanted and what they didn't want, that's how we got down to the figure you see today.
So again, going back to what I was saying, if you're going to try to, if the cost is an issue, you want to bring the cost down, then what you're going to do is you're going to whittle the site down?
Yeah, I mean, right now, you've got, to be honest with you, even though I don't like their website now, it's extremely economical. I mean, it's as cheap as I've seen it. And so if you guys want kind of, you know, no bells, no whistles, this kind of bare, bare minimum, the current website does that. But if you're looking for something a little more, you know, interactive, this is what you're looking at, based on the competitive bids we received.
And we've already approved this in the budget with the IT?
Well, it's in the budget for the IT project with the loan proceeds we have, but, you know, want the council to approve it, then it'll go against that loan amount.
I just have a suggestion. If we do approve this, something I would like to see on the website is incorporating our animal control in there, and maybe, I know, maybe I'm soft-hearted towards animals, but maybe showing pictures of the animals that we have in the pound, things like that. Is this something that maybe we could incorporate?
Yeah, I mean, it's, I'm not sure if that was talked about by the police department, but it's something we can do. I mean, when we were in Meskeen County, we had an entity that, it was called Pound Buddies, I think that was the name of them, that did that, that put out pictures of the available animals we had at the time, we named them, because usually if you associate some name with them, they had a better chance of being adopted for some reason. And then the price it cost to adopt them. So, and we can even process an application online of anyone who's interested in an animal. So, yeah, we have a lot of ability. Of course, it's going to cost per the functionality, but what you're talking about is pretty minimal.
From, just from communicating with some of the constituents, the website was brought up a lot to me, that we have, we have a very poor website right now. I don't know if the citizens are okay with this expense for the website, if they really want it that bad, but I would like to talk to some of my constituents and find out if this is something that they feel, you know, they really want as a service. I could see where it would be really beneficial to many people. I think it would look better on Papa Bluff if, you know, those factories who are looking to maybe find a place, if they look up Papa Bluff and we have some really nice website that they can go through, I think it would set us apart in some ways. But to me, that $15,000 a year, that sounds a little high to me, but...
It's hard to, it's hard to antiquate the whole amount as to what you're, there's a lot there. But the one thing I would think would be awesome is to be able to have sunshine requests available at the blink of an eye.
I think so, too.
Would it not help the staff a lot in that category?
It would.
So, I mean, that's, would police reports be able to be obtained off there, too, or not?
Oh, they will, but there will be a cost associated with it. I mean, it'll be a convenience fee for people to use the website.
Could people pay their traffic tickets online?
They would, and again, we talked about that as well. And so, but again, convenience fee, that'll be added to cover that service. And so, just want to give you guys full disclosure of what we're looking in. And here's the thing, though, is I don't want people to think that we're going to bludgeon people to death with fees to be able to make more revenue. The one thing I think that Ferguson has taught a lot of us is we really need to watch what we're charging our citizens, because I think that's what led a lot of these frustrations you see in that community, is you see what their police department was ranking in in revenues alone. It was alarming. So, we don't want to go anywhere near that level, so, but in this case, hey, look, you know, $2, $3 convenience fee for them to pick up a police report versus we're driving down here, that might be worth that amount to some people. If they don't want to pay the convenience fee, just come down like you normally would.
The other thing that I don't know if any of you all have had, but a lot of the constituents would really like to be able to pay their utility bills online. That is a very common thing that I hear from people. They want to be able to take their credit card and plug it in, because, you know, we're busy in Papa Bluff, we've got things to do. If you can get on the internet and pay your bill, just like you could your cell phone or your, whatever else you've got, it's like the only thing that the citizens can't, can't do as far as paying their bills online, so. Just have to ask our constituents that this is something that they want us to invest in or not.
I believe you could look at the maintenance, so you could just about replace an employee with everything that this is doing.
Well, you know, that's not what we're looking to do in this case, but it definitely will make our, it'll definitely make staff a lot more productive, because, you know, again, I tell you, the one thing that's really helped staff right now is just our automated phone system right now, just having the phone tree, be able to push a button and get that person. This is going to be another tool to be able to help offer the public with immediate service, where we want to provide better customer service than what we're doing now. So, yeah, it's just...
People that want to find information, they can find it on their own time, instead of having to look it up.
Right, I mean...
And she talked about the people that are looking at coming to her, said, either there'd be a lot more information than...
Well, it'll definitely help us complement, I mean, the Chamber's website's got a very good interactive website. I do like the Chamber's site. Actually, Pool Communications does that site. I like it. And it's very interactive, so I just want to complement more what Steve and his team out there are doing. I don't think we're holding up our end of the bargain to try to help lure people in with our website, and so I definitely recommend a complete refresh, and that's what this proposal will do.
The municipal utilities website is particularly embarrassing. It's old, when you look at it, you can't, I don't know, it's just...
Well, again, it's all a matter of what the council was willing to fund for the utilities. And according to the past I've seen, it's been quite frugal, and not that that's bad, but again, I would not throw that as a criticism towards Mr. Bach or utilities.
No, definitely not. I'm just saying that when you, when you get on it, it's, it's...
It just needs a little bit of sprucing up. Yep.
And this isn't to be voted on tonight, just moved to the voting session. It would give the citizens time to make comments, to contact us.
Yes.
And us to ask any further questions, and it's already been allowed for in the budget. And so we've got our bids and...
So they would have until, if we move this on to the voting session, they would have until April 20th to give us some feedback on what they thought. Does anyone want to make that motion?
And Pool was the only one locally, or the only one that bid on this?
They're the only one locally that bid on it, correct.
Was there any other companies in this area?
Well, they had, well, in the state, yes. He had Yodel out of Kansas City. You had, of course, like I said, Vision Internet, even though they're out of California, they had a local office in Kansas City. But the only one that's here local that would be applicable to our new purchasing policy would be Pool.
I do have a question. Who does the library's website?
They do it themselves.
Because it's amazing.
Yeah, they do a very good job. They host, I believe they host it themselves right now. I remember Sue mentioning that, but they do it themselves, as far as I know.
Maybe we should ask the library a few questions before the next meeting. Just an idea.
Well, they got a good, they have a one-person IT staff, and she does a very good job.
All right.
And could you get us the other information from the other companies that we didn't receive? All only received the one.
I'm sorry, yeah, I will, I'll email this sheet that shows you how we analyze it, so make sure the whole council has it. Apologies, I thought you got it. Apologies, I thought you got it.
I'd make a motion, we move it to the voting session, April twentieth.
I'll second.
Motion is second to move item D to the voting session on April twentieth, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Item E, the city council will discuss whether to allow or not to allow vacation days in exchange for Rotary tickets for city, city employees.
Yes, I'd put that on the, uh, agenda. As I told Mr. Kaplan, you know, in reading my interpretation, I'm not a lawyer, interpreter just in the city ordinances explained, and I think, uh, all that was in our packet of how vacation days are earned, and anything above that would call for an amendment to the ordinance in order for that to be allowed. Is that correct, Mr. Smith?
What was the question again?
The way the ordinance is written says that, uh, vacation days are earned. You know, one year, you know, you get five days, and two years, and all that. And this adding another day in there would be, uh, in conflict with the ordinance, would have to be an amendment to the ordinance to allow another day to be added some way.
That sounds correct, I'd have to read the ordinance, I haven't, uh, I've been having previous notice of this, so. But do you know the ordinance number?
I think it's in our packet.
Is it, is it one-twenty dot four hundred?
Section one-two-oh point three-eight-oh.
Three-eight-oh.
And one-two-oh point four-zero-zero.
Now, is, is this come under a different heading as to, um, I don't know, I wasn't familiar with it. The practice of, um, I guess it was from two oh two, two thousand and two to twenty thirteen, where employer, employees were allowed a half-day off if they either attended a health fair or got inoculations or something to that effect, I, I wasn't really clear on it.
I've done a little bit of research into that, because that was something that was brought to me. Um, my understanding is that when you, when you let someone off for something like a health fair, the difference is that it might decrease the, the insurance cost. And you know, during that time, we probably had, well, we still, still do have somewhat of an, of a deficit, a deficit with the insurance. And, and the other side of this is that we are, um, basically, it, it's like we're helping a charity. It's not really, we're not trying to save money on something, we're just...
Well, I mean...
And it's a good idea, it's a nice, it's a nice suggest, uh, thing to do, I'm not saying that.
Well, and what I wasn't clear on was, was the half-day off, was it for attending the health fair, or did they get a half-a-day off by going to the health fair?
Mr. Massingham?
It was for attending the health fair, uh, we had different stations set up for blood pressure checks and diabetes checks, things like that. The employee would get a card, and when they went through each station, they'd get a sticker, and after they had so many stickers, then they would earn a half-day's vacation.
So they would actually get a half-day?
Yes.
For going to the health fair?
Yes.
But they didn't get, that, the half-day wasn't for going to the health fair?
No.
It was for actually being at the health fair.
Right, and they had to use it within the next, uh, year, I think.
Okay. Well, now to me, you know, that's, that looks like an, that's an incentive program, and, and like what you said, it deals with health, um... You know, I'm all in favor of if, of having maybe a committee to determine what's the appropriate measures to do with regards to incentives for the employees. I know that, um, I had discussions with a lot of constituents during the winter, and how appreciative we were and how good a thought, a job, and you, and we put it on social media, that our street department did with regards to the two big snowfalls we had. And then I had even talked to, um, uh, Mr. Johnson, and I said, you know, we really need, well, to try to do something for them, and I, and as we talked about it, we just... I didn't feel that a few dozen donuts on a Monday morning would be adequate to thank him for the service. And especially with the fact when we had the, on, on the police station, City Hall, when we had the, um, rain and the accumulated water and the, and the snow and ice, and they were worried about weight load, they came and, and cleared that off, which, I don't know how hazardous was, but I know it had to be cold and a dirty job to do. And then the other thing I was concerned about was, um, you know, we have, um, we have, the officers have had, you know, cut, uh, some events happen in the last few months. We've had two fires, um, the, the utilities did really good keeping our power on during the storms. Then we had inclement weather, and non-essential, uh, staff were told not to come in, but essential staff, you know, braved the elements. And I looked at it as an incentive, uh, for the employees. Um, I think that if we want to, if we wanna have a, a dialogue and have a, a format of how we do this in the future, but for me, considering that from two oh two to two thirteen, we had the availability for half-days all those years, and we're talking about a full day this year that was done by Mr. Kaplan as an incentive for the employees, and, and a sidebar was the, um, more likely to sell the ticket for the, for the spaghetti dinner. I think it was more for, as an incentive for the employee, from my take on it. And then we also had the consideration that we have some employees that have already used some of that vacation time, or that time off, rather, um, and how would we address that? So, that's what we're looking at.
Well, I see a problem, you know, with the, with spaghetti tickets attached to it, with the, the Rotary, and it's a great organization, and they do a lot for the community, and, uh, so does all our other organizations. I see no stopping place with it. You know, we've got all the churches that have, uh, kids that are trying to raise money to go to church camp, or on mission trips or something. And once we start that, some other town, say Dexter comes over and says, hey, our church needs some money, can you give your employee a day off, they buy this? We say, no, it's for on-town, in-town people or something, we're gonna get ourselves into lawsuit for race, or either religious discrimination or something. We don't need to tie any organization to getting, buying tickets or anything to that for getting a day off.
I think if we, you know, if it, if it would have been done in a way where it was like a random drawing, say every organization in the area went in a hat and someone picked one out, and that's what it was gonna be too, and maybe, maybe the employees could... Everybody who bought a ticket could go, could have gone into a drawing where somebody could win a day off, I don't know. I, I think that might have been a better option, but, um, you can certainly see where trying to do good for an organization...
I took it as he was trying to get our city employees involved in our civic organizations, and there's only a handful of those. You're talking about churches and all this, that, that's not what he was including at all. But we talk about our, our fair committee and the downtown, the iron horse, we, we have a problem with people being involved in that. Anything that's gonna raise volunteerism in our community has gotta be a good thing. And to have our city employees exposed to the Rotary Club has got to be a good thing. I mean, to, to encourage them to be involved in our civic organizations, we'll just boost them around, boost the, make them better employees, make them more involved in the community. And I would think in the long run, to get people involved, and like our fair, um, you talked to Keith Shelton, he's president of the, the fair committee. We didn't have a demolition derby, and I asked him, I said, what, we didn't have enough cars to participate? And he said, no, we had plenty of cars to participate, we didn't have anybody to run it. And to me, it ought to be just a matter of organization and raising awareness, as Mr. Kaplan is trying to do here, to, to get people involved. And we can have a lot more activities and a lot more community involvement. I had the privilege of walking, um, parades with one of the campaign operations, and all of our small communities around here, they have parades, and they have tremendous. Uh, you go to Puxico, they have the homecoming, you know, we went to, uh, down at Campbell, they have the Peach Days and all that, and people just come out of the woodwork. And, uh, and it seems like our fair and our, our things downtown are, are dwindling. And to me, anything we can do to get people involved, raise awareness of it, is a good thing. And that's, that's what Mr. Kaplan, he sent out an email, he specifically, you know, said, this year we were gonna do the Quanis Club, next year we could do either Lions or one of the other clubs, and rotate through. And like I say, to me, it exposes the employees to our civic organizations, and we'll get them involved in that and raise their community involvement and make them better employees.
Well, I agree, you know, we can, uh, encourage them to be in it and work on it, but I don't think we need to expend taxpayer dollars to do it. Uh, the Constitution, you know, Article Six, Chapter twenty-three of the Constitution of Missouri says, uh, that no county, city, or political corporation, or subdivision, or state shall own or subscribe for stock in any corporation or association or lend its credit or grant public money or thing of value, and the service that these, uh, employees are doing is something of value or to aid in any corporation, association, and Rotary may be an association or individual, except for as provided in this Constitution. And the only thing it allows for is like increases in, uh, like a pension, a cost of living increase, or a death benefit, or something in that nature. And so, and that is, you know, the service that all these employees are doing does have a great value to our citizens. And I just, you know, say if we could, you know, what, you know, if we wanna run something through ordinance to, in order to be able to give them a bonus for doing their job other than the pay and the overtime that we do, it's, you know, a pretty good salary, they all work hard. Police department's out in this, when I was on the police department, it's snow days and stuff, most time we'd be spending taking doctors and nurses to the hospitals to work and bringing staff in that, you know, could come in to answer the phones and transfer things.
You know...
We spend a lot of time just transporting those folks for, you know, the hospitals and everything.
When you read his newsletter, I mean, it's obvious that his heart was in the right place when he came up with this idea. And I think a lot of people just jumped on him because that's the popular thing to do around here. But, you know, on the other side of that, we have to, um, uh, we do have to consider, what do we do if we, if we turn this down? What do we do about the employees who have already taken their vacation? Do you have any suggestions? Anyone?
Madam Mayor, do we know how many tickets were sold, how many actually bought tickets?
About two-hundred-and-eleven.
How many?
Two-hundred-and-eleven.
Two-hundred-and-eleven out of the two-thirty-nine?
Yes, ma'am.
As far as those that's any, that's already taken it on that, uh, section one-twenty-four-hundred vacation leave in our ordinances, the last part it says, leave taken in excess of that earned and credited shall be without pay. So if this wasn't earned, it was just bought for a six-dollar spaghetti ticket, you know, they'd say, I hope they still got some other vacation time to take off, and they just took off a, another day.
Well, how does that, I'm just, I still wanna, how's that compared to the half-day for over ten years that was allowed? And also, I guess, also, are they allowed an hour, uh, on election day to vote? Uh, they're given an hour to go vote on election day? So how does that and the, and the half-day fit into that same equation? I'm just trying to understand that.
Yeah.
Cause a half-day is a half-day.
Yeah.
And it's valued at a half-day.
I wasn't on the council at that time, I was an employee, and, uh, best I understand, remember, and I could be wrong, was that that was part of the insurance premium. They were giving us the reduced rate if we did this health fair thing and got people to attend it. So it saved them, you know, some money on one end, and I don't know if that's...
It saved the insurance money?
Yes.
Cause that's what I was...
Day off, if it had to do with the insurance and all that, you just tell them to go.
It was in, yeah, insurance, the way I understood it, that the insurance had agreed, you know, a lower premium if they attended the health fair.
Well, then you just make it mandatory for the employees to go.
Yeah, you've got four hours off, so, you know, I don't know how, I wasn't on the council at that time.
Well, they stopped it on twenty thirteen. Then it, it went to twenty, it went up to twenty thirteen.
Here's the man with the answers.
We were gonna do it in two thousand and fourteen, but we were going through the bidding process, and, uh, at the time, MHJ organized the health fair for us, and with, uh, them not knowing if they're gonna get the bid, they, we just kind of canceled it last year. Uh, as far as reducing insurance premiums, I don't think it actually reduced the premium itself. I mean, the thought was it would, if we catch somebody that's got an illness early, then it's gonna save us money in the long run. But they had to do more than attend it, I mean, like I said, they had to go through and get things done while they were there, so, you know, they had to get their blood checked, they had to get their diabetes checked, and we had a podiatrist there, things like that, so, it was more than just walking in and walking back out.
No, I understand that.
I know.
I understand, but instead of, just, just instead of doing that just to keep your rates low, they also were incentivized by a half-day off.
Right, correct.
And that's about, and that's what I'm getting at.
Yes. The cost for the health fair? I, I don't know off the top of my head.
So really, the question is, do we want to continue to incentivize getting days off? And is it really different when you could have potential savings for health insurance and employee benefits compared to, um, you know, putting a charity in the mix, an organization in the mix?
Yeah, I think, I think if, if we want to look at it that way, I think we need probably more advisement on, um, what the appropriate route to take is, because you got several things in the mix here. We've got, we've got, where we have incentivized in the past, and we've offered half-days off in the past for certain things, and then we have, this situation has come up, and then we really need to figure what we're gonna do in the future. So we need to, we need to be able to deal with this situation.
Right.
We need to do the right thing. So I think, in my opinion, um, you know, that's what I'm looking at, is to do that.
That's where the personnel policy that we keep hearing about, that...
Yeah.
Mr. Kaplan is wanting to put in place, that's where that would come in handy, because we need to start making things more consistent, so that we don't have these problems.
I guess, um, this kind of boils down to a, a personal thing to me, and I shouldn't allow it to be that way, but I guess I take exception to this, having been a member thirty-nine years of the Altrusa International Organization, and, and this year, we're sixty years old, we've given sixty years of service to this community. And I think about Rotary and Quanis and, and all of the, all of the service clubs. Lions are the finest, some of the finest service clubs that I have ever heard about anywhere, that have given great service to this community throughout the years. I've been on this council for over twenty-five years, and not one time have I ever asked a girl or anyone in the office to buy a ticket to anything for Altrusa, because I didn't want them to feel obligated because I was a councilwoman. And that's the way I feel about just the principle of the thing.
I feel we oughta take into consideration, though, that Mr. Kaplan has offered this to the employees as an incentive to boost morale. And it's something that he has said that we do, if we pull it away from them, what's they gonna do to our employees' morale? And that's, to me, that's invaluable. I, I think that, you know, if you wanna change something in the future, let's change it. But this is something that the employees have already been offered or participating in, some of them have already taken days off. If you take it away from them, it's gonna have the complete opposite effect, it's gonna downgrade morale instead of raising it. I don't see, you know, offering them a day off would raise morale. If you read the report that Mr. Kaplan sent out, um, it talks about the Oxford Economics, you read the...
Excuse me, Madam Mayor, could he talk into the mic, please?
I'm sorry. Um, the Oxford Report that he's sent out with our, with his email explaining what he was doing, did you read that?
No, I didn't, I didn't get it.
It talks about, you didn't get his email? Did that not go to...
Does that not go to?
No, Betty's email always bounces back at me, and we usually have to give it to her in person.
But it talks about proto, productivity goes up and, uh, the morale of the employees. And that's my concern, is that the employees have participated, like we say, some of them have already taken days off. And if we yank this back from them, I believe it's kind of like we're reneging on something that he has offered them. He is our senior manager.
I may interject a little bit here, too, Peter. I think, uh, reviewing the ordinances, which I was somewhat familiar with anyway, I think, you know, whether or not it was entirely correct or not is maybe questionable, but I think, I think Peter's suggestion, for the sake of the employees, not to punish employees, I think they would over, and punish employees might be making the situation worse than whether it was questionably officially done in a correct manner or not, because I think, like everyone said, it was done with good intentions, I think even that agrees with that. I think maybe the ordinance, uh, to make it, uh, maybe something to prevent this in the future might be where to go. Is that, uh, any, maybe have ordinances to draft ordinance stating that in the future that any days that, uh, would like to be granted, and this man would be pre-approved by the council. And, because I hate to take away the ability of the council to, uh, to incentivize the employees, especially, you know, we do have a large dedicated group of employees, and, you know, sometimes we do good things with good intentions, but not be a hundred percent legally right. But I'd hate to see the, you know, an employee suffer in this instance, too, that I think maybe, uh, a good compromise might just be to, from here on, that draft ordinance that , uh, any such time off would have to be, and if, if they do give it, it's sort of, I, I think Sashir is correct. I think, you know, I'm a member of several groups, too. I think if they do decide, the council does decide to move forward with a special day like that, it should be a lottery system or something to, to incentivize, uh, all these, all the different agencies, and, you know, Quanis and Lions and Knights of Columbus are all good organizations and have fundraisers.
Mr. Smith, if we, if we, okay, say the council decided to allow this instance where the employees could get their day off, what do we then do about the other organizations? Because we're going to have, I don't even know how many there are.
But from a practical standpoint, no matter how many organizations you have, you're not going to grant, you know, let's say, more than one day off. And we don't know if this is going to be a yearly thing. This needs to be done in respect to what incentive plans we can do. Um, and so I think that has to be looked at. Whether you have a committee, how we would do that, work with Robert on that, Mr. Smith, you know, I just think that we need to have a, a definitive way that we're going to do it in the future.
Right.
We had, uh, some kind of community program. What is it? Where the employees, I know the VA was participating in it, where the employees voluntarily give a percentage of their salary, and then they're given a list of charities, and they can select the charity that that, that money goes to.
If the council wished to continue, you could do just like that. And if an organization wished to be on that list and be put in a lottery system, could then do so.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, Susan McVeigh, two-eleven Kayleigh Circle. Um, the prior thing you were talking about on the health thing was it, it already had city council approval. And in this situation, I feel like the tail is wagging the dog. Mr. Kaplan gave away something, he didn't respect city money, and gave away something that was not his to give. He should have brought it to the council, gotten approval, and then gone from there. If he truly had it in his heart that he wanted to give to the Rotary Club, then he could have himself bought the tickets and given them to the employees, or wait until he had city council approval, because there's a huge difference in that. Um, as it is, it really didn't cost Mr. Kaplan anything. And actually, I think it was for a trophy, wasn't it, Mr. Kaplan?
I'd have to ask, Mr. Funky, do they give a trophy for who gets the most tickets? I didn't know if there was.
Uh, I think there may be. It, it's a relatively new thing. I know there's sort of a contest on-
Yeah, I wasn't, wasn't aware of that if there was, so, so, I don't know.
I think you should honor what Mr. Kaplan has done, and possibly, you'll, you're going to have to have an ordinance, because you've broken the law. I mean, it's against the law, it's against state statute, it's against our ordinances. So it's not fair to the employees, because he shot his mouth off and gave away something that wasn't his to give. If he'd had approval, he could have given it, such as in the health fair. Um, that, it's a huge difference in those things. I would just make that as a suggestion, that you do honor it and make your proposal. But how you're going to supply this kind of days off for as many organizations as here, it'll be way more days than people having vacations already, per ordinance. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
I may offer another suggestion. I don't know the members, but I'm trying to always work toward the best of the city is that, uh, we could tie that in something like personal days. A lot of, uh, organizations, a lot of employers get personal days, and we could tie that to something like this, they would have a personal day or something, and, and also tie that to that, so they could choose a, and have a system, lottery system, where we choose this organization each year. It's, you know, but it's up to the council in that regard.
Is that what I suggested earlier, like a lottery, like-
A combination of lottery and, and-
Well, we, you'd work that out. I, you know, I think, you know, this is something we need to spend some time on, we need to do it the right way. Um, I think that can be worked on in the future. Um, but I agree, I think we don't want it to, uh, you know, I want it, I want it to maintain the spirit that was men in, which was to, uh, thank the employees. Uh, we had a, we had a, not a terrible winner, we had a, not an easy one either, but, you know, we had, uh, good efforts from, uh, the four departments I mentioned, and, uh, as well as others, and, uh, we just want to stay within the spirit of doing something. And I, and I would love to have some type of a, of a, a structure where we can, um, do something for those that, that go beyond the call of duty.
Madam Mayor, in looking this over, I don't think the city had to write a check for an extra days off. I think it, from my understanding, was already, salaries already built in the budget. But a lot of people think that we just had to go into Tills and get the money out extra to pay these people. But I think it was already in the budget, if I'm correct. So-
I think there'd probably be some extra cost, uh, just because I think one part-time person or something I'd heard was involved, and they don't have any benefits. Okay. And, uh, and then I think down, uh, from when I was on the police department before, like I said, if it was down at the street department and equipment, an operator was off for a week, somebody's a laborer who didn't get paid as much, had to operate that backhoe, then he got the, uh, equipment operator paid, which would be an increase in that salary. So if an equipment operator, or two of them take off, and laborers go up, there's an increase.
Yeah, Mayor, can I address that?
Yes.
The, um, in my opinion, and this is just mine alone, um, there is not a cost associated, a cash transfer, so to speak. Um, and really, your best check for that is the approved budget for fiscal year fifteen is when you close out the books, you have a higher, uh, expense and salary at the end of the year, you'll know I'm wrong. If there isn't, you know, I'm right. The only, um, that's the only measure you got, but based on what myself, I've looked at it with our, our consultant, Neil Conway at Cowan, I looked at it with Mr. Massingham. We also contacted over ten different municipalities. They all do it the exact same way that, that I'm calculating. Um, and I just, now, I don't believe there's a cash loss whatsoever. Now, the, the argument could possibly be made about, okay, what's the cost of lost productivity for giving someone off a day off? I don't even know where to begin to even calculate that.
Well, there's an hour, there's a, the man-hour situation, but to, to move forward, what I would recommend, if I could put it in motion, is I think we need to honor the commitment we've made to the employees. And I would like to have a, a committee set up to look into the proper way that we're going to structure, how we're going to incentivize and, um, reward, uh, departments or employees for what good work they've done.
That was a motion?
Yep.
I'll second it.
Okay. That was a motion. Can you repeat? Because it was kind of long there.
That's fine. I think that we need to, I make a motion that we, um, keep the current offer intact so that, um, the, the, the workers don't lose the incentive that they were given. And then I want a committee set up to set up a structure for how we will do anything like this in the future, whether it be for the entire employment base, or departments, or individuals, for work done.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yeah.
If I may. One thing, what we had in, um, in Michigan, they called it a compensation commission. I, I think if we expand it just a little bit, because that's what it sounded like you're, you're trying to create, um, for example, if they have a compensation commission, what they would do, they would look at all the salaries, fringe benefits, and everything of all the two-hundred-and-thirty-nine positions, make sure, is it appropriate? Um, and they look at those things, they also look at what the council members are being paid. Um, they look at everything, including, you know, the, uh, paid time off, sick time, vacation time, personally, where do you want it? I would suggest even expanding that to include, um, you know, the classification and compensation in general of all employees and positions, if you, as long as you don't mind.
That way, we try to stay within our ordinances, change our ordinances, or staying within the, uh, Constitution of Missouri, yes.
Um, before we go any further, I don't know if, we have on our agenda that this item was, is to be voted on April twentieth, and I don't know that anyone here is prepared to vote on that right away tonight. But what, what concerns me, what I would like to do is be able to go back to the constituents that I've talked to, and I've talked to many who were not happy. And I don't know if it's because they were misinformed, or if it's because they just genuinely just displeased. But I would like to be able to talk to my constituents again after we've brought this idea up of what you said, um, before I vote on it. So if you're wanting to make a motion, are you wanting this tonight, or-
No, no. We, if you want, we can do a workshop next, uh, meeting. It can be workshop and/or vote, which means if you don't want to, you just roll it over. But I think the, the issue is, if you all need time to think about how you're going to vote, the issue still that, that my motion deals with is preserving the current incentive that's out there for the employees. That's the biggest one.
Okay.
What are they going to do this week? Now we're going to handle it.
Okay.
Audience has already taken.
Okay. That's the simplest way to do it. Okay, so, we have a motion on the table to preserve the, um, what's already been offered to the employees, but in addition to that, um, can you repeat it again? I'm so sorry.
It's okay.
It's just a very long-winded motion.
Long-winded? Long-winded?
Just a little bit.
Um, I want to preserve the incentive that's currently available for the employees. That's the first part of the motion. Second part of the motion is to have a, and we can do two motions if you want. Second part of the motion is set up a committee, to set up a structure for how we will deal with incentives in the future for the city employees, departments, and individuals.
And then I have a second to that, and we'll move this to the voting session, which will be held on April twentieth. Okay? All in favor?
So, we can say, so the first part is to allow employees to buy, to get a day off from buying a six-dollar spaghetti ticket.
Basically.
If, if you're going to preserve the incentive, I, I mean, I, I'm staying with the same, uh, you know, I'm staying with the employees to preserve their incentive is what I'm, what I'm trying to do.
But we're not voting on it tonight. We're moving it to a voting session. Does that make sense?
Spaghetti day's tomorrow, if matters.
Yeah, that, we really will be benign point.
I think, I think we ought to go ahead and vote on it, because it's, what are you going to do this week? What about the employees?
No, I, you know, as far as it goes, you deal with that after the fact. And I think you move it to the voting session of the twentieth, and the event's over, we, then we have to do, if we have to do a retrospect on what things are going on, we'll do it. But I think just, we need time to discuss it and talk about it, and, um, just give us an opportunity to do that.
Well, I don't know if we can, you know, if that's not covered in our ordinance, wouldn't it be going above and beyond the ordinance, Mr. Smith?
The time, vacation taking time off, I believe it's beyond that, but-
So could we even vote on something that would be violating our ordinance? Until we amend that ordinance?
Let me read the, the opinion we got from Jessica.
You can go ahead if you like, but, um, but, uh, well, because of, you've done that, but you've also done so in the past with the half-days off of health fairs and other situations, and there's some precedent for it. Uh, whether or not, uh, it's a true contravention of the ordinances or not, and, uh, and whether or not this, it goes up to the funding issue, too. There's two points you're saying, is one is that it violates the vacation slash time off ordinance is correct?
Yes.
And then also may, may violate the financial aspect of providing a, uh, a, a unapproved disbursement of funds for the city. We discussed that with over the St. Louis Attorney Disbursement of Funds, and that's somewhat true, because you have some, I think Mark would have to be the one who would say, whether or not there was a true disbursement of how much this was affected or not affected by funds. And then it does violate the heart of the, I mean, the code of the city ordinance, I think, as to what time is off. But then the spirit in itself, what is done in the past with health fairs, not, whether or not, so a long-winded explanation, it does violate maybe to the heart of the matter, but not, not to the heart, but to the letter of the matter, but not to the heart of the matter, because of the precedent of giving some time off for health fairs. It did some benefit to lower the insurance. This helped incentivize employees, maybe pursuant to that study that Mr. Kaplan provided us, that it did help with improvement. So yes, it's, it's a gray area, as in all matters of law. It, uh, it could be said, yes, it did infringe upon the order of somebody. It needs to be approved, but the matter of which you approve it, if pursuant to the motion on the floor, it approves it, and, and then I think you'd have to, because when you do an ordinance, typically speaking, to any of, each ordinance states, any, any, any ordinance that's in conflict with that new ordinance that's passed is, is considered to be amended, too. So if you take this under advisement, I mean, basically, the truth is the matter that all the employees are taking the days off. They haven't, they're not waiting till tomorrow to take it off. Because I know employees, and they said they're already taking off the day. So I think maybe Mark can answer that, too, but I believe all the, most employees who bought the tickets have already taken the day off. Is that correct?
No, I think probably anywhere from a half a dozen to a dozen's probably taken it off, but-
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, then that, you know, then the council would have to figure first that, you know, might be unfair, but that's the legal aspect of it. I think it does violate the letter of the law, but, and you need, you need an ordinance to amend, but you can pass ordinance approving this on a temporary basis until such ordinance could be examined, and then they could be amended to affect that. That's my answer.
Well, the original, the original says the city council will discuss whether to allow or to not allow vacation days in exchange for Rotary tickets for city employees. Um, okay, the motion on the table is different than this. What I think, since everyone's up in the air about it, I think we're going to do a roll call vote on the motion.
Which motion?
Your motion.
Okay.
Did anyone want to discuss it?
First part or second part, or? Didn't, wasn't it a two-part motion, mayor pro tempore?
Well, it, it has two components in it. And, and I think one of the important ones is the last one, which is, we need to create a structure for how we're going to do this in the future. The first part of it is that I think we need to maintain the incentive that was offered to the employees.
And the motion is really just to be voting on it at the April twentieth meeting on his motion? Okay. Roll call.
Councilman Gears.
No on the first part and yes on the second part.
Can we do that? Okay.
Councilman DeGares.
No on the first part, and yes on the second part.
Can we do that? Okay, so you can't do that, you have to vote.
So, would you like a friendly amendment to my, for me to make it two amendments? Is that what you want me to do? Make it two motions?
I think that would be...
I think that would be best.
Okay, so the first motion is, in, in spirit of the incentive for the employees, I recommend that the motion be that we maintain the incentive that was offered to them. So we'll deal with that motion first.
Is there a second to that?
I'll say.
Roll call.
Hang on, y'all are throwing me a curveball.
No, we split up the motions.
Okay, gotcha. Okay, so on the first part, Councilman DeGares.
No.
Councilwoman Abshir.
No.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes.
Councilman Tinsley.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Russian.
Yes.
And Mayor Pearson.
No.
Okay, it fails.
Okay. Second motion.
Second motion is for us to set up a structure for the future, how we will do incentives for the employees of the city, and the departments therein, and individuals.
We have a second.
Second.
Motion, a second. Roll call.
Okay, Councilwoman Abshir.
Yes.
Councilman Tinsley.
Yes.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes.
Councilman DeGares.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Russian.
Yes.
Mayor Pearson.
Yes. Okay.
And then, the first motion passed, we couldn't hear.
No, it failed. Is it really that quiet?
Yeah, they are, they're not talking in them. They don't talk.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Did anyone want to move item E to the voting session on April 20th or not?
I think the second part passed.
Right.
The second part did pass.
And the other failed, so it didn't go anywhere.
Okay.
We voted on his motion.
We still have the motions.
We still have item E floating out there. He made a motion that was not item E.
Plus, he feels addressed item E, but it's a whole different...
I'm sorry, sir.
Unless you feel that motion you passed addressed item E.
I think, I think it did, I think that's what he was trying to clarify, that, you know, the first motion was to allow it, which was the issue that came up in this, and the second one was to, was to come up with some type of ordinance or regulation or something to incentivize, to do an incentive to the employees at a future time, if this ever comes up again. Am I right? Mr. Russian?
Well, the first motion was to allow it.
Yeah, and it failed. And the second was to work on something to do it in the future.
Have a, have a, yes.
To get it into an ordinance or amend the ordinances we have.
Okay, so that failed. All right. If we're done with that, let's move on to action required items. Bill number 7806, the city council will take action on ordinance enacting a debt policy for the city of Papa Bluff.
Motion for first reading.
Second.
Motion and a second for first reading of bill number 7806, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I think that should also be tabled until it's looked at at the finance committee. We tabled the one part up on item C, you know, to look at it for bids, and then that debt policy, on one of the last pages, it said that just the city manager could pick whoever the financial advisor is, and how we would go on the bond or the debt. And since those kind of tie each other together, if one's tabled, I think the other should be tabled, until we've done research, either through the finance committee or some more on it.
I believe Mr. Kaplan said the finance committee is going to be brand new.
Speaking your microphone.
Eat that thing.
As Mr. Kaplan said, the finance committee is going to be brand new, and it's going to be a lot for them to get up to speed to review something like this, it's going to take considerable amount of time.
Well, however much time it takes, you know, that's the financial future of our city, and the one portion on that where it says just the city manager has, can pick the financial director, the financial advisor, and the way the debt is done, and we just tabled that up previously in the workshop item, the item that deals exactly with that.
Well, if, you know, I don't mind taking the time, you know, there's a lot of, there's a lot of sections to this.
Yes, there is.
If we want to work out, the problem we have is, you know, I would, I would like it if the finance committee could hit this thing tomorrow morning, but evidently that's not in the plan. If, if we wanted to work out the bugs on all these items, you know, if we want to do that, or work on part of them tonight, I don't mind. I just don't know, Mr. Kaplan, how are we going to be to, to, if we wait for the financial committee, advisory committee to look at the entire document?
Mr. Kaplan, did you want to address bill number 7806?
In regards to, so you're referring to page 15 of debt management policy, that's item B, financial advisor. I'll read for everyone in the public case, they don't have a copy, it says, "Financial advisors may assist the city in structuring and issuance of bonds. A financial advisor represents only the city in the sale of bonds. Moreover, a financial advisor shall provide advice to the city in all matters listed in section one of this policy, its direction of the city manager. The city manager will determine whether to retain a financial advisor, and will approve the selection of a financial advisor. For conduit and non-rated transactions, the city will have a financial advisor unless this requirement is waived by the city council. During the contract term of any party acting as financial advisor, neither the firm nor the individual employed by that firm will perform financial advisory, investment banking, or similar services while without any entity other than the city in transaction involving a city financial commitment without the specific direction of the city manager. The city may select a financial advisor who engage in municipal bond, underwriting, or brokerage services. As per Municipal Securities Rulemaking Board Regulations, the city's financial advisor, a firm may not also engage in the underwriting of the city bond issue for which the firm is acting as a financial advisor. A firm may, may also not switch roles from being a financial advisor to underwriter after a financial transaction has begun." That's the section that I believe Mr. DeGares is referring to. What I would just say is, hey, look, just amend this little section here, it says, hey, look, the city manager will recommend a financial advisor that needs to be approved by the city council, that's all you do. Because there's, there's a lot of work that's in this thing, you guys already workshopped it, you already discussed it, you had time to turn in your comments, I think it's ready to go.
Is there any, would that change be adequate for you?
Well, at the last meeting, you know, we discussed it, you know, you said, you know, this was something for us to look at, and that was the one I said had lines through it, and I had some highlighted deals where I couldn't even read part of that on it, and I was surprised to see it on the voting deal, maybe I shouldn't have been, but I was, because, you know, I said, it seemed like it took a lot of the oversight of the council not being in on this, and I think, you know, that's our job, to look at every little portion of it. And, to be honest with you, I read, you know, the 20 pages, or whatever it is, and I didn't understand all of them, and I read them again, and I still don't have a firm grasp on all of it, and I don't feel comfortable voting on something like that, that deals with all the money of the citizens that we're going to expend without knowing more about it. And I think that financial committee that you form would be very beneficial on items like this.
So let's backtrack here. You want to table bill number 7806 until after we resolve? It was item C in the workshop, which would mean that we would get some bids on...
Well, we need, we need some clarification on a lot of it, I think, see if, you know, we, if we need oversight in it, or we don't.
Did you want to table this until the next meeting?
Well, I, I don't have a problem with that, I know on time constraints, I think the reason why a lot of this is on here, you know, is so that we have a structure that, you know, would assist us in situations like we're currently dealing with, the eight points.
I understand the need for it. But, you know, a lot of times, you know, we do this and say, well, we can come back and change a portion of it later, oh, we can shut the barn door after the horse is gone too, but that horse is still gone. So we need to understand all of it, and make sure that's in the best interest of the city, every little part of it that we can understand. And like I say, this, this weekend, you know, this Easter weekend, I think you'd mind it was Saturday, even where we're all busy, and I think another week, or the next meeting would not be bad to give us time to digest it and ask questions on it.
Well, you know, sometimes the packets, you know, can be 100 pages, 150, sometimes they're 400, you know, how that, how that goes, or more. The only thing that I say, the only reason, I mean, I digest a lot of this, and I've agreed with the part with the amendment we've talked about, and that could tie it into what we just did a while ago on the table. But to me, I don't really go along with this, we got to get that, unfortunately, that financial committee is going to have to run faster than the 15th, you know, and that's the only thing I can say.
It's the only day I could get them all in the same room.
Yeah. And that, and that's the time constraint of dealing with people that have businesses and lives, and they're running their, themselves, I mean.
Well, and the only concern that I got is the more we're egging, egging the reimbursement to eight points development, we're really talking about possible legal action against the city, and I just...
I know that Mr., yeah.
And the other, the other thing is, you know, I'm available to the council Monday through Sunday, and I just, I'm a little surprised that Ed said he had questions, because I'm available to all of you. Ed calls me on my cell phone, I guess he didn't this time, but that's fine, but I am available to everyone. If you got questions, please let me know, if you don't want, if you don't want to hear the answers from me, I can also set up where you guys can talk directly with First Southwest, or our legal counsel that's helping us with, hopefully, moving forward with the reimbursement transaction, which is Mr. Stephen Sparks from Bryant, Bryant Cave. I can do a lot of those things, but I guess I first need that correspondence so I can help. But in this case, this is a very comprehensive debt policy that encompasses any debt issuance that's allowable under state law.
Well, how would it be, and you know, we've got many paragraphs here, but how would it be, and I think the one you addressed is the most prudent one, if on any of these paragraphs where it requires a major decision process to be done, you just put it in there by approval of the city council? I mean, I mean...
Yeah, the city manager cannot issue debt without the approval of the council, this cannot do it.
Well, what I'm saying is, he said he read the document several times, and some it was difficult to understand, and I can understand that. What I'm saying is, in any of these provisions, I mean, we, we have to ask ourselves, how are we going to deal with the time constraints that Mr. Bornstein's putting on us? And, you know, we got, we got to be able to do that. And so, how, how do you, how would you recommend that we could expedite the matter? I don't care if we meet again in two days or three days, I don't care how often we have to meet, we just have to get through and be set up to take care of, if, if we are or not going to do the debt issuance.
Well, in the, Madam Mayor and Mr. Mayor Protem, the only part that concerns me as well is, this debt policy is hand in hand with your eight points TIF area. Now, it's only, it's a section that addresses it, but then it goes over beyond that with all different debt issuances, they're allowable under state law. Now, the redevelopment agreement, which I have a copy in front of me, this document took me several months, this took me six, eight months to really feel comfortable with everything that's in this document. You'll see that I've just got a bunch of highlights, you know, pictures, everything that, that helped me get to the point where I'm at today. You have to really understand this agreement, the redevelopment agreement between the city of Papa Bluff and Eight Points Development, before you can really understand why the debt policy goes hand in hand with this. And so, my first question to the council is, do you really understand the redevelopment agreement that the city entered into on August 6, 2012? Because if you, if you don't, I would recommend you start there.
If it took you six months to read that to get to this, how can we make an informed decision from Friday till now?
It's a good point, but, but my point though is, that's why you hired me, is I'm providing, providing you with guidance, I'm providing with the information, I'm also bringing in consultants to help inform you, and so...
Well, what the question I'd like to ask is, you know, it, you know, to, to address our need, Ed, what, what would you recommend that we do, given the, you know, Eight Points developer, I mean, they've been communicating with the city about the debt issuance. So, how are we going to be able, I mean, because we're behind our timeline already, aren't we?
We are.
Yeah, we are. And how, and how much is that, the tardiness of that timeline accumulated in, in money thus far?
Okay, so, and I do have that calculated as of today, you've got two certificates that were approved, that totaled $13,234,059.91. Once you apply the accrual of the interest, which is now 10%, because we had 180 days to refund the issuance, which a lot of that time took me just researching and understanding the agreement, as of May 1st of this year, a interest payment is due of $762,570.21. Even with the collections I believe that Mr. Massey and myself, our consultant Neil Conway are calculating, we're not going to have enough revenue to even pay that interest payment. And so that, whatever is going to, I think it's going to be closer to about $500,000, what I think the casher's going to be, give or take. And so we're already about, you know, $250,000, $260,000 that we can't even cover in that interest payment. And so that's going to get compounded until the next payment, which will be November the 1st, which is $661,703, which will add on, which we can't pay already in May. But the way the agreement's written is, we just pay them what we have, and then whatever else, we just keep compounding interest, we still owe it to them. And so, this is where it gets scary, is you got a, you know, enormous amount of debt, being $13 million, that's accruing 10% interest, until we understand what's the best way to move forward. And I understand that, I have no problem with it, if that's the council's wishes, I'm a good soldier, I would do what I'm told. But I'm just saying, food for thought is, you have a lot of money accruing daily on this thing, and I just want to get it to where it stops accruing.
You know, and we, and we've, we had, we had a meeting with the developer, we had a meeting with financial advisor, and, and some of these things were discussed at that time. So my, my, again, coming back, knowing we have these pressures, I mean, to me, what I'm throwing out there is, I'll come in on a Saturday, I'll be here a whole Saturday, I'll come in on a Sunday from noon to 6:00, or whatever we got to do. And I think our financial committee, you know, I know you want to do it a certain way, I think our financial committee's pretty bright people. I think if we have to throw them in the mix, bring them on board, I know that's not what you'd like to do, but we, we have to do something on this, and I will put every amount, whatever amount of time that we've got to do to do it.
Well, the good news with our finance committee is, we have, I know one member that I know of that is very familiar with this. Not all to the detail that I am, but I think has a good working base to come from, now the other ones, don't know, I don't, I don't know if the other ones are familiar with it or not, I know at least one of my committee members is. So we, you know, we at least got one that might be able to help the others get up to speed.
Well, one thing, if I understood Mr. Russian right, you know, if you put in that, this policy, you know, each, under each paragraph with the council's approval, you know, that's our job, is to watch some of this, you know?
I mean, even though that, yeah, even as far as that's been done in the clause, there's nothing wrong with putting it in there.
If we would have, didn't, what was agreed with, with the Eight Points developers, would we be accruing this amount of interest?
I'm sorry, say that again.
If we would have went with the agreement that we had with the developers, would this interest be going on, would these bonds already be sold?
If you would have followed exactly what Alan... If you would've followed exactly what Alan Bornstein wanted, let's say the council just rubber stamped it, no, you guys have already sold the bonds, you would've geosubvented the property the way he wanted, and this probably would've already been a done deal. But, but no, I, it probably would've been closed, but I think you have, and I think that would've been a disaster. I think you have an opportunity to, to really take a careful eye and looking at this debt issuance to make sure, one, can it be repaid? And two, is it proper to issue debt using what vehicle? And what I'm proposing, per this debt management policy, is to use a conduit. The city has used conduits before. And so, I'd say we create a conduit like we have before. It's an industrial development authority, and we let the industrial development authority issue the bonds. It puts a, the city in, I think, a better risk position before issuing these bonds, because these are non-rated bonds. And if you don't know what that means, is there is no rating agency that is going to give a credit rating on this kind of debt.
And, and that decision would be up to the city council to make that decision. But now, you could, we could put on each one of these paragraphs, provided through the approval of city council. You know what I'm saying?
Sure.
Just for the sake of getting it done?
Sure.
And then, but I still think, like I said, I still think, whether it's with the finance committee and the council, to be honest about it, I don't, I mean, like I said, I'll come in on a Saturday, I'll come in on a Sunday, you know, I will come in and whatever we have to do to work through this document so that we meet all the concerns of the council and of the finance committee, I'm willing to do that.
And we understand all of it.
Yeah, yeah.
And I recommend we start with this document.
Yeah, we can do that. But we're probably gonna have to, you know, we're probably gonna have to carve out the time for that. And I think we gotta do it soon. So, as long as we have a quorum, that's what we're gonna need to do. So are you, are you okay if we amend that to provide approval of city council on each one of these paragraphs?
Yes, as long as, you know, the council oversees all.
I would like to make a, a motion that we amend each paragraph in this document that says, provided with the approval of city council.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, a motion and a second to amend bill number seventy-eight zero six to add approval by the city council under the paragraphs. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. So bill number seventy-eight zero six will be amended. Okay. Do we need to do another? You just had a first reading. Okay. Okay. We've already had a motion and a second on first reading of bill number seventy-eight zero six. Want to go ahead and read that, Mr. Smith?
Is that to be added at the end of the ordinance paragraph that is approved by city council?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, go ahead.
In order to the city of Papa Bluff, Missouri approving a debt policy for the city as approved by the city council.
Move for a second reading.
Second.
Motion and a second to, for a second reading of bill number seventy-eight zero six, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Smith?
In order to the city of Papa Bluff, Missouri approving a debt policy for the city as approved by the city council.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Motion and a second for adoption of bill number seventy-eight zero six. Any comments or questions? Roll call.
Councilman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman DeGares?
Yes.
Councilwoman Abshire?
Yes.
Councilman Tinsley?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Russian?
Yes.
Mayor Pearson?
Yes. Bill number seventy-eight zero seven, the city council will take action on an ordinance approving a conditional use permit to allow for the sale of alcohol in a C-three central area commercial district at two oh four North Broadway.
Move for first reading.
Seven-eight oh seven.
First and, uh, first, first and a second for first reading of bill number seventy-eight zero seven, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Smith?
In order to the city of Papa Bluff, Missouri granting Rogers Theater, Inc., a conditional use permit in a C-three central commercial zone district to sell liquor by the drink at the Rogers Theater located at two oh four North Broadway, Papa Bluff.
Move for second reading.
Second.
Motion and a second for second reading of bill number seven-eight zero seven, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Smith?
In order to the city of Papa Bluff, Missouri granting Rogers Theater, Inc., a conditional use permit in a C-three central commercial zone district to sell liquor by the drink at the Rogers Theater located at two oh four North Broadway, Papa Bluff.
Move for adoption of seven-eight oh eight.
Be seven-eight oh seven.
Second.
Excuse me, wrong.
Okay. Motion and a second for adoption of seven-eight zero seven. Any comments or questions? Roll call.
Councilman Johnson?
Yes.
Council, Councilman DeGares?
Yes.
Councilwoman Abshire?
No.
Councilman Tinsley?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Russian?
Yes.
Mayor Pearson?
Yes. Okay. Bill number seven-eight zero eight, the city council will take action on an ordinance granting a request from Greg Dodd to install a forty-five-foot freestanding radio tower at property, at a property located at six eighteen Carolyn Lane in Papa Bluff, Butler County, Missouri.
Move for first reading.
Second.
Motion and a second for first reading of bill number seven-eight zero eight, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Smith?
In order to the city of Papa Bluff, Missouri granting Greg Dodd permission to construct a forty-five-foot freestanding communication tower at six eighteen Carolyn Lane, Papa Bluff pursuant to city ordinance section four zero five point zero seven zero.
Move for second reading of seventy-eight oh eight.
Second.
Motion and a second for second reading of bill number seven-eight zero eight, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Smith?
In order to the city of Papa Bluff, Missouri granting Greg Dodd permission to construct a forty-five-foot freestanding communications tower at six eighteen Carolyn Lane, Papa Bluff pursuant to city ordinance section four zero five point zero seven zero.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Motion and a second for adoption of bill number seven-eight zero eight. Any comments or questions? Roll call.
Councilman DeGares?
Yes.
Councilwoman Abshire?
Yes.
Councilman Tinsley?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Russian?
Yes.
Mayor Pearson?
Yes. Bill number seven-eight zero nine, the city council will take action on an ordinance accepting the extension of Baron Road West.
Move for first reading, seventy-eight oh nine.
Second.
Motion and a second for first reading of bill number seventy-eight zero nine, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Smith?
In order to the city of Papa Bluff, Missouri accepting a donation of real property from Hillis Development LLC to extend Baron Road West in the city of Papa Bluff.
Move for second reading.
Second.
Motion and a second for second reading of bill number seven-eight zero nine, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Smith?
In order to the city of Papa Bluff, Missouri accepting a donation of real property from Hillis Developments LLC to extend Baron Road West in the city of Papa Bluff.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Motion and a second for bill number seven-eight zero nine. Any comments or questions? Roll call.
Councilwoman Abshire?
Yes.
Councilman Tinsley?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman DeGares?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Russian?
Yes.
Mayor Pearson?
Yes. Bill number seven-eight one zero, the city council will take action on an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a first amendment to a supplemental agreement between the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commu- Commission, Union Pacific Railroad, and the city of Papa Bluff relative to signalization improvements to the Vine Street Railroad Crossing.
Move for first reading, bill number seven-eight one zero.
Second.
Motion and a second for first reading of bill number seven-eight one zero, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Smith?
In order to the city of Papa Bluff, Missouri authorizing the mayor to execute a supplemental agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission, Union Pacific Railroad, and the city regarding signalization improvements to the Vine Street Crossing.
Move for second reading.
Second.
Motion and a second for second reading of bill number seven-eight one zero, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Smith?
In order to the city of Papa Bluff, Missouri authorizing the mayor to execute a supplemental agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission, Union Pacific Railroad, and the city regarding signalization improvements to the Vine Street Crossing.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Motion and a second for adoption of bill number seven-eight one zero. Any comments or questions? Roll call.
Councilman Tinsley?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman DeGares?
Yes.
Councilwoman Abshire?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Russian?
Yes.
And Mayor Pearson?
Yes. Bill number seven-eight one one, the city council will take action on an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a letter of engagement between the city of Papa Bluff and Carm- Carmody McDonald. Did I say that right?
Close notion. Move for first reading, bill number seventy-eight eleven.
Second.
Motion and a second for first reading of bill number seven-eight eleven, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Smith?
In order to the city of Papa Bluff, Missouri authorizing the mayor of the city to execute a letter of engagement between the city and Carmody McDonald, PC.
Move for sev- second reading of bill number seventy-eight eleven.
Second.
Motion and a second for, a second reading of bill number seven-eight eleven, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Smith?
In order to the city of Papa Bluff, Missouri authorizing the mayor of the city to execute